Okay, I think I see Director Larson is Edna. Welcome, Edna. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. We'll call this meeting our regular board meeting for February 8th, 2022 session. We'll go ahead and do a quick roll call. Director Hoover.
Here.
Director Bowler Jack.
Here.
Director Poa Ryder here. Director Morris.
Yeah.
And Director Larson.
Here.
And Student Representative Samuel Fia Pito. You here this evening, hopefully en route. Right? All right. We'll go ahead and just like to welcome guests and Director Larson is going to go ahead and facilitate this.
So we're going to start with our meeting agreements. And they are stay engaged, experience discomfort, be vulnerable, speak your truth, and expect and accept non closure. And I think we're going to go at this point into in recognition of Black History Month. I think we're going to have anybody who's interested in kind of recognizing someone appropriate for Black History Month can do that. I'm going to start with a person named Catherine Johnson, which most people is probably not a well-known name, but she may be more well-known when I indicate that her life was documented in a film about five years ago called Hidden Figures. So she was a math mathematician who worked for the National Air and Space NASA, National Air and Space Administration. And her contribution during the early days of space exploration was to do the mathematics, the analytic geometry calculations that were required to get the astronauts back to Earth. And you know, this is one of those jobs that's interesting because if you didn't do it right, we'd have astronauts, you know, dead out in space somewhere, which we don't fortunately. And it's also one of those jobs that, you know, if you do it well, you don't get a whole lot of publicity, but if you didn't do it right, then it would be all over the newspapers. So it was, she's interesting for a couple of reasons. One is she did these calculations back in a time, the early days of the space program when there weren't computers. And so she's, all these calculations were done by hand and came out right. All the astronauts got back home safely. And the kind of the, one of the relations to our district, I was noticing a number of years ago, I started noticing that we had disproportionate number of black and Latinx students failing our ninth grade science and math courses. And at the time I asked one of our black students, you know, why she thought that was. And the response came back very quickly. Role models, lack of role models. And so I think the importance of recognizing these, these figures from black history are important for a lot of reasons, but one of them is to hold up the role models so that our students can aspire to be successful in a lot of these fields. And I know Catherine Johnson and looking in her later life, she spent a lot of time talking to students about STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math fields and getting them encouraged and to go into these fields as well. So that's my recognition. I don't, did anybody else, anybody else interested in highlighting somebody? Okay, I see Director Poa Ryder nodding her head. You want to go next?
All right. So in the nearly 233 years history of the US Senate, there have been 12 black senators. And two of those senators that are black women have been from Washington State. So first was Rosa Franklin and Senator Rosa Franklin worked tirelessly to improve health equity and access for Washingtonians during her career in the House or the Senate. Well, she was in the House, then the Senate, then the Senate from 1993 to 2010. And then elected last year was Senator Tawina Noble, Nobles, and she represents the 28th Legislative District, which is down towards Pierce County. So we've got like Furcrest, Lakewood, Steelikome, Dupont, University Place, Tacoma, big catchall, including Joint Base Lewis McCord. And Senator Nobles was sworn into office. And so she was the first black senator to serve in a decade. Senator Nobles brings, and what's really why I picked her and why it's so darn important is there's a lot of just, I just resonate with her leadership. She brings two decades of experience in education and community leadership. She is the Vice Chair of the Early Learning and K-12 Education Committee, as well as the Vice Chair of the Higher Education and Workforce Development Committee. She also sits on the Transportation Committee and Behavioral Health Subcommittee. And I can just speak to last year through the legislative session. Senator Nobles, an amazing leader, brought so many different bills that were much needed in regards to chokeholds, police reform, domestic violence, and protecting children. She attended Tacoma Community College before transferring to University of Puget Sound, and she ended up with her Bachelor's and Master's of Arts in Teaching. And then she ended up teaching at Stadium High School, Lincoln High School, and then had the opportunity to get to meet her because several students that I had been working with did their internships with the Tacoma Urban League where she was a CEO. And then since 2016, Senator Nobles also served on the University Place School Board, where she worked hard to make sure every voice is heard and every child succeeds. And so in honor to this amazing black woman leader and Senator Rosa Franklin, who came before her, those are the two that I wanted to share tonight.
I'd love to share a very personal story. When I was a little kid, I lived in a pretty segregated town, didn't know very many people of color. But there was one girl with very, very dark skin that went to my school, and I don't even know what her ethnicity was. I just remember that her skin was a different color than mine, and I was curious about that. And I can so vividly remember the time on the playground, coming around the edge of a building. I could still see the building in my mind, probably six or seven years old, and I ran into her and I touched her skin. And her skin felt just like mine. And I just remember that feeling of, wow, she's just like me. And I will never forget that because it was so eye opening for me. And I don't know her name. I don't know what happened to her. She wasn't in my class, but she made a big difference in the way that I saw the world.
I'd like to recognize our very own DeShawn Quinn for his dedication to our community, for his integrity, his wisdom, his insight. I just greatly appreciate his leadership.
So I had a really hard time narrowing this down and still didn't quite as much as I maybe should. So I have four folks that really to me represent a label of bravery, disruption, and accountability in the name of justice. And so these individuals particularly have and continue to do work. And so there are two folks from the past. And one, if there's a new documentary on Emmett Till, particularly with an emphasis on Mamie Till Mobley. And so I have been just overwhelmingly inspired and rejuvenated and just by her bravery in exposing the truth of what really happened and what was happening, regardless of what that could mean for her. And so her resistance and her resilience. And then Billie Holiday, as a musician myself. I mean, we owe so much of our musical heritage to black musicians. Billie Holiday specifically for her incredible resistance and not backing down to people who attempted to silence her voice. Not, not only attempt, but like almost succeeded, and she would not let that happen. And both of those two individuals really spoke and sung about the truth of the black experience. And then two current folks that I just wanted to honor their presence in our world. One is individual named Prentice Hemphill. And for those of you that don't know Prentice, Prentice is a teacher and an embodiment coach. They're also a writer and they do conflict, they're a conflict facilitator and embodiment practitioner. And so one of the things that inspires me so much about them is just their commitment to racial healing and showing up fully for ourselves as ourselves. And yeah, so something that came from their website that I think just kind of sums it up is they work to really disrupt the complacency and comfort of mainstream healing and therapeutic models. And instead want to infuse what we know about justice to repair accountability into our deepest work of transformation. So through healing is how we'll achieve justice. And then lastly, I want to honor Stacey Abrams, who I don't think requires a lot of introduction. She's a fierce advocate for voting rights and takes advantage of every opportunity to make real change. She has continuously pushed boundaries and challenges stereotypes and like is blowing through doors. She refuses to concede literally and calls out things as she sees them. And I, as a leader myself, a leadership quote that comes right from her that I just is so representative of how I want to show up in the world as well, says, good leaders are always at the ready, but not always at the front. So for those four folks, I think just, I wanted to honor again for their resilience and their bravery and consistent. Yeah, all those things. I'll stop talking now. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And although this week, this month is Black History Month, the truth is, is that we've got amazing leaders making history and in our communities all year long and just hope to continue to bring forth amazing leaders in our community as well. And I'm thinking about our next generation of scholars as well, and the leadership that they have been doing and will do in the future. We'll go ahead and move along to the land acknowledgement or land acknowledgement.
So we in the Tuckbola School District acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn, and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duamish and Mokushu people, past, present, past and present in honor with gratitude, the land itself and the Duamish and Mokushu tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land. And we recognize the Duamish and Mokushu people who have been living and working here since time immemorial.
Thank you, Director Larson. We'll move along to item two, the approval of the agenda, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
In favor. Be opposed. All right. Agenda is approved. We'll move along to item three, board certified teachers recognition. And I understand we have Principal Frumstead here this evening and are to present recognition. So welcome.
There we go. Hello. Sorry I had to join. So I am here. So good evening. First, thank you so much, Board of Directors, for this opportunity to speak a little bit about Ms. Salisbury. Hi, Ms. Salisbury. I kind of wish we were in person, so at least I can maybe give her like a real air high five or like something, right? So I don't really have anything majorly prepared, so I'm just going to kind of speak from my heart, but I won't take too much time. Is that cool, Ms. Salisbury? Okay. So when I first found out about her receiving her national board certification, one of the things I shared with her was I really hope that you get to celebrate this accomplishment. You know, there's so much that we, you know, as educators and have been through, and I was like, wow, this is amazing. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of hard work. And I know Ms. Salisbury has worked extremely hard to meet her goal. And she has kind of shared with me along the way, you know, she's working on her boards and what she was doing and what she needed. And I just want to take this time just to say that, you know, Ms. Salisbury is a teacher leader at Cascade View. She is actively involved and she participates on our teams and our committees. She's a communicator. She gives feedback. She gives ideas and suggestions. She's super creative. And one of the things is her classroom is vivacious. And that is important because there is always active learning in her classroom. In education, you talk about that healthy noise level, and that's her classroom, right? Kids are engaged. They're talking to one another. They're in their small groups. She brings them back. You know, she digs into the curriculum. You know, we have our workshop model. You know, she's there for teachers if they have a question. But I think about the word vivacious when I think about her classroom. It's not going to be quiet. It's not going to be silent. And you know what? That's what I like to hear because I have a lot of energy. As I always see, I've had no caffeine today, by the way. But that's what happens when you walk into her classroom and, you know, the kids are raising their hands or asking questions. She allows them just to be kids. And sometimes that's what our kids need. They need to be able to say like, you know what? I have a question. Or what if I do it this way? She's not a textbook teacher. And what that means is she's just not going to open the book and read it and close it. And she promotes just an amazing atmosphere of learning. And so like I said, I wouldn't take up too much time, but I really do sincerely want to congratulate you. I know I did it in the email a few times back in like November, December-ish. But I want to make sure that I acknowledge you and I congratulate you on this hard work. And I'm excited to see what the kids do for the rest of this year. And I just want to congratulate you on your national boards. It's not easy. I know you've been writing and you've done a lot and you've been going back and forth. But you show up for our kids every day at Cascade View and you allow them to have a voice and you advocate for them. And I'm going to not cry. But that is what touched my heart because so many times our kids' voices are silent, but you give them that opportunity. So thank you so much and congratulations on your national boards.
Well, let's just open it up. I'm going to just give the round of applause. So take a look because it's happening. It's happening right now. All right. Anyone else on the board that would like to, oh, look at that.
It came yesterday. So I wanted to.
I agree. I have walked into that classroom several times and have you apologize for your kids being so loud. And it's like, no, they're working hard. I love walking in that classroom.
I've not had the pleasure to do that yet, but I look forward to doing so and congratulations. It's well deserved. I have no doubt. Thank you.
Congratulations. It's a monumental feat.
And just so people know, this is not a a simple exercise or just a series of checkboxes. Like this requires an extreme amount of dedication and work. And I think any teacher that endeavors to complete this, not all complete it either. So sometimes it takes multiple attempts. So I think Ms. Salisbury definitely well deserved honor and credit for completing this. Our students and families benefit accordingly.
All right. Well, thank you. We'll go ahead and move along. So appreciate, much appreciation to what you are doing and will continue to do. And thank you, Ms. Frumstead.
Really happy night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night. So we'll go ahead and we'll move along to public comment. And currently, public comment follows a written format. Ever since COVID and we had to take meetings virtual. And of course, like because of that, we don't always, I currently have the best opportunities. And so hopefully tonight when we discuss improving some policy that will actually change the dynamic. And so is, currently the only way to submit is through written. So Debbie or Ms. Core, do we have any written public comments this evening?
No, we do not.
All right. Well, move along to reports. And the first is the race and equity update.
Great. Thank you. I have a couple of items, but I also want to start with a follow-up on progress for the change of mascot for Thorndike. I did follow up and have a meeting with the honorable leader of the Duamish tribe, Cecile Hansen. We had a great conversation last week. And she looks forward to a time when COVID is gone and students can come back to the Long House in person. And she's really excited to be engaged and see students in person again. But I also did invite some folks from Thorndike Elementary to kind of update the board on where they are in the process. I know there were a couple of comments previously, but I'll turn that over to Ms. Thomas to guide some of that update.
Good evening, everyone. I'd also like to, I'd like to start with introducing Honey Nurr, who is a member of our Race and Equity Team, reading intervention teacher now and soon to move into a social emotional intervention position, which will be kind of like a dean of students. And she's also a principal intern and she will be presenting our plan for changing our mascot name with me. So we will create an ad hoc committee to do the work with members from our Race and Equity Team, from our leadership team, parents, Duamish tribal members, and fifth grade students. And the students will be elected by their peers in their class. And we will include parents who represent the diversity at Thorndike. And we hope we are able to find a Native American parent. The reason being, the idea behind this is to find a name that would not require getting permission another time and at the same time, honor the land we are, we live on and we learn on. And so we would like their contribution. And Ms. Nurr, I think that you're up next.
Yes. And then another thing we thought about with that is since we are race inequity and we're moving towards being more equitable, it makes sense that we involve the community that, you know, is a part of the namesake that we're changing. And so that they can have their input and kind of guide us through that. But the team, the ad hoc team will plan to meet in March. And at the first meeting, we're hoping there can be consideration that each class can have an opportunity to suggest a new mascot for the committee to review. And the rationale behind that was that the entire school gets an opportunity to get involved in the name change. And it also teaches the students about the democratic process as young as kindergarten all the way to fifth grade. And if it works out, the idea is then to, oh, no, your turn, Constance.
That's all right. So once we have two to three mascot ideas that the committee all agree would be suitable, we will ask our students to vote. And we have a news station that's run by students here called KTHO News. And the, the, the top two to three choices for mascots will be presented on the news. And we will lead the democratic process and have every single student in the school vote. And the most popular choice will be our established new mascot. And so we will be not only including student voice, but also showing them the democratic process and being involved in it.
And then we did reach out to the Duamish Long House, not just Constance, but the Race and Equity Team, and no one has heard back from them. And I believe we also reached out to the Mokushu tribe as well. And we were wondering in Constance, maybe you can speak to it more, like what would be the process moving forward to that? Is that because we didn't hear back, we have to move along with the change? Or is there something that can be done where if the namesake can still be saved, is there a step we can take?
I think Flip will clarify that, Ms. Nurr. I think maybe you might have misunderstood me when I was mentioning. Yeah, I did hear back from the Duamish. I talked to them, but I haven't heard if they will join our committee yet. And Flip, will you clarify that?
Yes. So in my conversation last week, I did hear that they did prefer a change in the mascot. And I also had stated, even though the governors of the change in legislation required also getting contact from the nearest federally recognized tribe, because we did not hear back from the Mokushu. We were going to follow the suggestion from the Duamish and make that mascot change. So I think that's the course to take because we already have that suggestion. And, and they're willing to work with us for sure. So that they said that they'd be willing to work with the committee as well. So if you are having a challenge getting communication, just let me know and I can email them again as well. And I'll, I'll email them tomorrow just to let them know that, that the team will be reaching out to them.
Yeah, great. Because I did hear back, I actually reached the Duamish in December and spoke with a graduate of the Tuckbola School District. And she said she was interested in participating in this ad hoc committee. But when I reached out just a week ago, I just haven't heard back since then. I just left a voicemail. So if you could follow up, that would be great, Dr. Herndon. And I want to share with you sort of a funny little story. One of our fifth grade classes already has inspired us with a possible name, and the name is Thunder Goats. And I asked the teacher, well, wait, is, is there an animal, actual animal named a thunder goat? I don't know about this animal. And she said, oh, no, 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 it's fictitious. Goat stands for greatest of all time. And when my students in my class are giving each other support and encouragement, that's what they say. They say, they call each other goat. So that is, they've also been, she showed me drawings of the thunder goat, fictitious thunder goat. And so that is current first initial idea that might be presented to the ad hoc committee. I think that about sums it up. If there are any questions from me or Ms. Nurr, we are ready to take those.
Oh, one of the questions I have, which I know comes up often in thinking about just kind of community involvement is around communication. And how kind of like, what's your plan to get the word out to the larger community specifically that this process is taking place? And, and then how can folks join the committee if they're interested in, in doing so?
Thank you. That's a great question. So I will put it in the next Thorndike Family Newsletter. So it will be put up on the website and can be translated into all the languages of our community. And because we have until March to do that, and I haven't put out this month's newsletter, it'll go in this month's newsletter. I think, oh, yeah, the other thing, way I'll communicate this is every, at the beginning of every week, I write a Thorndike Weekly Bulletin for staff, and I will ask staff to communicate this in their family newsletters. And I'm actually not sure of any other way, but if other, if there are some ways to communicate that I'm not thinking of, I am open to that suggestion.
Definitely on this, the district. Definitely on this, the district social media page. And I wondered too, I don't know anything about when the publication of the hazelnut comes out and if it would align at all, but could we get anything in there? Or are there any other like citywide?
The hazelnut's kind of the, probably the biggest citywide issue. But yeah, putting it out in our social medias is a, as a also great option. Think we can do all those.
Any other questions?
Ms. Thomas, one thing that just comes to mind that if there is going to be a group coming together, perhaps it could be more of a collective to brainstorm more ideas and more ways to improve relationships so that more people are part of the process. So rather than that group being the decision makers, their job is to do more of the actual looking at what needs to happen in order to do this well.
Thank you for that feedback.
I'm just thinking again about communication, Dr. Herndon. I wonder if this would be an opportunity to partner and collaborate with TCF around communication?
Yeah, definitely. This is one of the areas we talked about, reaching out to them to talk about additional networks they may be knowing about that we don't have a input into. Yeah, for sure.
And then my last is just an acknowledgement to Ms. Crawford and Ms. Martinez and Ms. Goodman, amazing community leaders who've been really strong leaders of the Race and Equity Committee. And so just want to honor all the work and effort that goes in above and beyond workload during the day. So thank you all.
I just want to say thank you. I love, love, love the, just the embracing of youth voice and also the democratic process, but the empowerment of youth voice. I'm just really, really grateful for y'all, building that into your plan as such an integral and central piece of your plan. Thanks for all of your work.
Followed out.
Thank you, Ms. Nurr, Ms. Thomas and members of your race and equity team. They had mentioned that yesterday about the mascot change during the district wide race and equity committee meeting. And it was great to hear that. So I know there's a lot of excitement about that within the building. So I think it's going to be a great process. The other update I had around race and equity committee piece was now that we have, are back in person, we are re-engaging with University of Washington to have our student listening sessions around the SRO process. So we're looking to schedule that time for students to have their voice heard. Probably after school, we'll be working with the buildings to figure out which spot works well. Previously, we'd looked at either the library or lunch area, commons area for showalter and possibly the pack up at Foster. But we also have to coordinate to make sure there are, are not other events happening there. So we got, have to find a time where the UW team can come out and assist with the facilitation. And the chief is available too. So I spoke with him earlier this week and he said it was kind of jam packed for the next week or two, but we will get that done. We want to follow that same process. And then shortly thereafter, we would get the recommendations and feedback from each of the groups from University of Washington and talk about pathways forward. So I look forward to more of that process and seeing all that feedback and seeing where we go with the remainder of that. So those were my two big, big updates for this week on the race and equity side.
Oh, go ahead.
So a quick question around that, that just came to mind around the student listening session. So I know middle school and high school is kind of the primary audience. If a, if an elementary student wanted to come and participate, would they be welcome to do so? And if so, is there any way to distribute at least at a minimal level, that information to those students?
Yeah, we can certainly make them aware of the opportunity. Yes. Especially probably fifth grade students as they'd be the ones transitioning up, you know, the following year. So yes, we can make that known for that at the elementary levels as well.
Yeah, that's an excellent idea, considering that we've got police presence, right? At all our schools at one time or another and important to get that feedback.
Yes.
Also be more equitable in terms of representation and including most of our community as well. So anything else for race and equity or is it all right for us to move into COVID?
That's what I had, yeah.
Okay.
COVID updates, myself and Ms. Maestro, I don't know if she is in here or not. Yes, she is. So I'll just do a little bit. I know we have a lot of updates that are starting to happen all over the country around COVID and recommendations and where those are. So we're keeping a close eye on that. I did attend the state superintendent's COVID, monthly COVID webinar. He did that today. So as of now, I have not heard any, about any changes coming from the governor's office or the State Department of Health. So we do get our updates that come from King County Department of Health. But I haven't heard anything about major shifts that you may have been hearing about in other countries or other states. So other than that, we received more masks. So we should have plenty of those. Those are available at the buildings. Ms. Cardenas, let me know. She received several thousand new masks, which is great. And we have test availability, which is also great. We have different ones now. We have three different types of tests that are available. Our last pickup were the home tests, the I home test that people can take home or, or do right there on the spot. That's a little bit different and yields a result within 15 minutes. So those are the pieces I know. Ms. Maestro, I didn't know if you had any other updates?
Hello, yes, so we were able to start training the new contact tracers and quarantine specialists. We're very excited to have them on board. They're helping us and the load is definitely light, which is really nice. We were seeing less cases. So it seems like the, I mean, knock on wood here, the holiday surge is seemingly over. And it seems like the, the quarantines and the the isolation guidance that we have is work, or they're working very well because I've not yet seen a transmission case, still keeping in touch with the DOH and reporting weekly cases or cases weekly. And then like Dr. Herndon said, we have three different types of rapid tests and one type of PCR that you take home. We're very excited to offer the newest iHealth test because those are portable. And we usually only have the ones that you can keep in the, in the health room. Whereas these new types of tests, parents can take home with them and, you know, give them to students who might be in isolation or quarantine. And then we are currently working with our third party communication specialist soapbox. And that allows us to develop communication templates that make communication a lot more simple for the contact tracers. So that way they're able to kind of put together communication both through phone and through letters and emails. So that, that's basically all I've got from, for COVID updates. Thank you so much.
And I believe tomorrow is our latest vaccine clinic that's happening as well.
Yes, yeah, so it'll happen from three to six. And I believe appointments and walk-ins are welcome. And we, we've been pushing very hard to kind of get that word out and I'm excited to see everyone there.
Has there been any family or staff feedback about the communication and being filled in? And if, you know, having extra tracers communicating is, is improving the speed in which folks are getting results or notifications?
I think so. The last week, definitely the staff survey that I've been sending out, the communication piece has been improving. I just got the results today. I haven't reviewed them for this past week. So I'll be taking a look at that. So based on that feedback, it seems that the communication increase is definitely better than it was in the past. So the specificity around the contact tracing, that's a big piece too. So that's one of the areas that I'm really trying to drill in to make sure that that information gets out quickly, accurately, goes to staff, goes to parents. So that's an area that I want to make sure we, we are following all the way through on.
I'm talking with the mute. So Doc, thank you, Dr. Herndon. Thank you, Ms. Maestro, for the updates. And we'll move along to legislative updates. Director Larson.
Thank you. So I'm going to start actually this week to, this week is National School Counselors Week. And so I want to recognize particularly our school counselors who've been doing yeoman's work and, and helping students get through these challenging times. And the other thing, you know, we've heard from our counselors frequently is, is they need some more support. And the legislature, to get to the legislative angle on this, there still is on the books for starting next year in 2223, another half FTE allocation for counselors to high poverty schools, which all of our schools would qualify under that criteria. And so I'm going to be watching very carefully. The budget bills haven't come out yet for the session. They will be in a few weeks and to make sure that that particular provision is still there. I'm, I've been told, I'm sure that that is going to be there. It'll be interesting to see also if, if that's going to be a permanent thing or whether they're going to take it away. But anyway, that's an area to be watching and hopefully we'll get that extra support in, in that particular area. So this week's, if you look at my reference for this week, there's a lot of things that got crossed off. And some bills, this is what's called the policy cutoff. So any bill that didn't make it through the, the committee that it was assigned to this week is basically dead for this session. They can come back next time, but there's a bunch of them that did not make it through the policy committees and will not pass this session. The big ones that are related to the additional social emotional staff, that's primarily nurses this time, but some social workers, counselors, psychologists. Those bills are still alive and moving. The enrollment stabilization is still alive and moving. The transportation allocation is alive and moving. Let's see, there was a new one actually that Director Apo Rider pointed out, which is an interesting one. Senate Bill 5793, which can provide, allow school districts amongst others to provide stipends for low income community members to participate in boards and commissions that are set up by the school district. That one's still alive and that one. Actually, one of the cosponsors is our Senator Hassadala. So our Senate, our staff are, we have a district are supporting that one. So I'll be keeping an eye on that one. That one will be an interesting one, which gives us, what it does is allows funds that come from the state general fund, which most of the school district's money comes from, to be used potentially for these kinds of purposes. And particularly to cover expenses related to low income fat, community members, like, you know, childcare and travel and those kinds of things. So that would, that could be very helpful for us when we're talking about getting more community involvement. So unless there are any questions, I think that's so, like I said, the big, the big next thing coming along in the legislature will be when the budget bills come out and that's when we'll be able to see where they're really deciding to put the money and be watching for that in the next week or two. So unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Director Larson. Oh, Director Morris, did you have something?
No.
Okay. We'll move along to the consent agenda or entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Subscribed.
All in favor?
Hi.
Consent agenda's been proved unanimously. And then we'll move along to item seven for board discussion. Policy 1430, audience participation update and review. And Director Hoover, will you provide a little context for this?
Yeah, so kind of in, as, as a part of our commitment as a district to equity and inclusion work, we are looking into how we can just ensure that we're updating certain policies to ensure that we're of course being inclusive. And so particularly throughout COVID, as we've been in a virtual space that has impacted the public comment. And, and so we wanted to review and update our policy to be more responsive to the time that we're in as well as looking ahead. And so this work was done with a collaboration between myself, Director Apo Rider, Debbie and Theron. And so we, as well as with some input from, from community. So, uh, yeah, more context. So I guess this is kind of ways, providing multiple ways for more participation from community. So the kind of two big buckets are this new area of community presentations, which is I think a really exciting way to allow, whether it be community based organizations, individual members of the community to bring forward ideas, presentations for the board to consider. And then of course, just more, what we might consider more traditionally, public comment. And then embedding multiple ways for people to contribute to the work that we are doing and to have their voices heard. So yeah, I think that's all I have. Bridget, if you wanted to add anything?
Sure. So just, I mean, even thinking back to when we first went virtual and our traditional ways of doing what was, what is called public comment was only, you know, once again typed or you have to show up at the meeting. And, and so there's been a lot of work done looking at other districts and talking with other districts too about best practices. What have they done to improve accessibility and more community input? And so that, it was more, that meetings were more accessible. And, and I know we've heard from the board that we want to be able to hear from community more as well. And so these ideas are sort of in process, right? Like we've been working on them for a while and now it's just a matter of putting it into, and revamping the existing policy. So I guess if there's any particular questions about the policy.
So I guess the only question, I don't, so I don't, are, are the, I don't see the comment or the suggestions for changes included in this policy? Am I missing something?
From the previous, are you asking Director Larson from the previous policy?
Yeah, so, okay, so what we have here in the, under the agenda, these comments are the extent of the changes. Is that correct?
This, no, this is a revamp.
Well, that's what I thought. And it sounded like what you guys were talking about was basically redoing this policy, but I don't, so that's, that's still a work in progress. Is that what?
So those comments that you're seeing there, those didn't necessarily, those were, I think, comments between Bridget and myself. I mean, it's fine that they're there 100%, but those aren't necessarily relevant to the document as a whole. So this is an entirely rewritten policy. I think the car current policy is very small, maybe three paragraphs. So this is a completely new policy, the whole thing.
So where are? So where is, where is the new policy? I don't see it here.
This whole thing is the new policy, Dave. The old policy is not referenced here at all.
Oh, okay, okay.
I think my opinion would be this is, this is moving in the right direction. And it may not be perfect and we may find that we need to tweak it again. But I support this movement to getting more voices involved as we can.
So I see Director Hoover has put the, is that the one that we currently have, correct?
Yeah, exactly, yep.
Yeah, so you can take a look at the, the current. And some of these ideas come from also, so I had several models, right, to pull from, from other districts. And so this one has elements of high line, elements of just different school districts. So in terms of the student and community comment, it's really important we inserted, because that wasn't necessarily in our policy very much, the importance of sort of putting students first and that instead of calling it public comment, that it's community. It's our students, they are the students, the scholars and community. And welcoming input both not only written, but also at the beginning and then also the ability to have oral comments at the end. What is also different about this policy is that we are in a way creating a way to capture questions because many of our community members, we've heard from community members that have questions or would like, you know, we say something and we kind of move along and would like to follow up. So a way to collect questions so that we would have those questions after the meeting. So if that is, and this will all be procedural, how this may happen, but to realize that even if a question isn't addressed in the meeting, that if someone has something that they want to bring forth, there is an ability to do that after the meeting as well so that there is more input, concerns, ideas coming through. There's also information about translation. So for those that are interested in participating and will be using translations, will have, you know, be able to contact us and then also be able to have more time for the translator.
Bridget and Carly, the idea of having 10 speakers speak three minutes at the end of a work session, when we only are supposed to only have an hour, would we, this is just a question, would we suspend the rules to go longer? Or would we put a timeframe in there that says as time allows or how? Yeah.
So I'll, I'll share that other districts allow the board directors to decide if they want to hear and if we want to extend. That actually is written, I've seen that written into policy or procedures. And I think there's something to that. I think cutting people off because we're running out of time is like the worst thing to do and to use time, right? That's very the, sort of the white supremacy culture, right? We need to go, go, go. We published this. We have to do this. And so I think that that, and it really shouldn't just be one board member. If there's someone that feels, you know, that we want, we need to hear this, this is important, this is important for us to do our work. So I think that's part of that, that's why this is like the first good conversation because then when we start thinking about procedures of how that can look. And that's something that I think that we do need to address. And with work sessions, work sessions would be at the very end. So thinking about, you know, if, I think, Director Bullerjack about the time and the three minutes. I mean, when we think about how many people have come to our work sessions and how many people, there's typically not too many. And if a bunch of people show up, maybe we should pay attention to that.
Yeah, that'd be a good problem, wouldn't it?
Some boards in their policy, I think, put that the president, right, the president, and so the president may interrupt or terminate, very oppressive language, but then call the meeting to recess if necessary, but then the board may yield additional time. That's different than other policies. I really think that any of us should, if it's important to us, that we should yield additional time.
There was one, it's interesting, was a meeting about some of the legal issues. So on the top of the second page, it talks about the president may interrupt or terminate your statement when it is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene or irrelevant. I think for a long time, people, and I mean, we've been in that situation or I've been in that situation or this meeting where people will come in and kind of personally direct, you know, go after somebody in the district or something like that, which, you know, in the, in the past, we said that, you know, we don't want to have the personally directed stuff. But I think the current legal, as I understand it from Wasta, is that the court system has ruled that's, that's a violation of free speech. And so I think we can still, you know, request that, but, you know, it's not really, I don't think enforceable by law, I guess.
So that may be something to remove, Director Larson, is that?
No.
Around revamping it?
No, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out as something I learned that was, you know, I think, I mean, it's still, I think it's still okay in there. The president may do that, whether it's, you know, in any way enforceable by law. We can certainly ask people to do that, not do personally directed stuff. I think that's a good practice, but it's just, yeah. So, yeah, I don't think, I think I would leave it there as is.
And I also think that there are cultural considerations as somebody who's very passionate and is, you know, in terms of thinking about also other community members, how we communicate, how we express ourselves, that, you know, that's another aspect. And so who's holding, who's holding the ideas of what is considered what?
Yeah, I mean, I'm good with this. Yeah, I didn't realize this was the rewrite in the old one. I guess I didn't go back and look at the old one. But yeah, this, this looks good to me.
So although it has gone out to community members, I'd love for us to also, oh, did we, do we have Director Morris? Let's look and see. Oh, I see Director Morris in the attendees list. Welcome back, Director Morris.
I got lost.
Welcome back. A thought that I have is it would be a better inclusive practice if maybe we all continue to gather community input on this and maybe there's additional wisdom we can seek out. And then I don't know if we will be ready, but potentially to be able to vote it into policy if there isn't anything too problematic. At an upcoming meeting. Are you all willing to sort of go out and continue to seek community input? And awesome. Okay. All right. So any other board discussion on this item or shall we move over to questions only presentations? Right, moving along. So questions only presentations and I'll, we'll go ahead and just start with number eight A. Any questions for that? How about B?
Just before you leave A, I guess there is, so I would like, so we did hear about this in the work session about this IREDA report from the consulting firm did. Can, can we get a copy of that, Dr.?
Yes, I'll make sure that when we get that, I'll send that out to the board.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I guess the only other point, I was, you know, we're gonna, this is going to be a significant budget and one of the key points, I think, in the rating, they gave us kind of a, we're at square one in terms of analyzing what this is going to cost in terms of the budget. So I guess I would encourage us to really, and I see in the answer to the question, I think, Ms. Jen has started kind of outlining what the budget, what the cost would be. So I think that's going to be really important to make sure that, you know, we have the budget in place to move forward on this stuff. And then also, as I said earlier with the S R dollars, as much as we can use S R dollars to help, help on the startup, I think, I think would be really helpful as well. So that's just a comment. That's all I got. Thanks.
Anything for eight B? All right, we'll move along to item 10, action items. May I get a motion for approval of the HR staffing report?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's been approved. Motion to approve policies 2402 through 2409.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, these policies have been approved. And we'll go ahead and move along to, we're about to have an executive session. So at this time, we'll be asking our current guests to please leave for now until we resume. And we'll, I'll go ahead and I guess, help me out, Debbie, do I ask for a motion? Or do I just go ahead and say that executive session will be to review the performance of a public employee per RCW 4230110G?
That is correct. And for approximately how long?
For approximately, what do you all think, about 20, 30 minutes? Does that sound right or do more time?
30 minutes sounds good to me.
I like 32.
I do too. All right, for about 30 minutes. Thank you, everybody who attended this evening. All right.
Okay, so I will pause the recording. Okay, we've got record.
Okay, and so we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, are we all consensus? Are we all in favor of ending? Sorry, it went over 15 minutes.
Okay.
All right, all right. Thank you, everyone. We'll see each other soon.
Thank you.
Doctor Herndon.
Bye.